This conference will now be recorded.
Sure, Mary Benton.
Yes.
Lloyd Colston.
Here.
Joni Curl. Karla Diagos. Paisley Howerton. Charles Jennings.
Here.
Ian Coon. Andy Patton.
Here.
And Cody Richardson.
Here.
Okay, public comments. Any persons who wish to address the planning commission regarding items not on the agenda. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. I assume everybody's here for the agenda, so moving on to number two, agenda. I've already got a copy of last month's meeting minutes in their email, but I see it ain't need to be changed in that. I didn't do a motion to approve minutes. Thank you. We have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Second.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Close? Same sign. Okay, number three, housing assessment stakeholder discussion. Josh?
Sure. As part of the housing grant that we're applying for, we have to do a housing assessment tool. We're applying, planning to apply for a $300,000 grant. And what that's used for is, is it $25,000 a house? Or is it something like that? It depends on exactly how it works out. But $25,000 per house, so there's math there that's, I think, about 10 or 12 houses that we could work on. But part of it, we have to talk to the stakeholders in our community about what they feel our housing needs are. And we've actually been to a couple boards already. We talked to the Equal Opportunity Board. We also went to a Rotary Club meeting yesterday in an attempt, because we figured that was a pretty broad spectrum of our community, all the different areas we need to hit, and we did. A good cross-section of the community yesterday. So we thought we would also come here to the planning commission. I invited a number of different groups. I know we've got a couple here from some of the utility companies. We've got Dr. Riddles here for the college, and somebody was actually there for the college at the Equal Opportunity Board, too. So we got quite a bit of input from the college. We also... I'm trying to think who else we invited to this in particular. There's a whole list of, a whole bunch of different groups of people. I think we invited this school this year, too, but I don't think that they're represented tonight. On top of that, we also, we have a couple interns from WSU that are helping us with this process that's kind of helping put it all together so that it makes more sense. So I didn't have enough time to devote to actually writing this report, so we brought in them. And we have one of them here tonight, Emily, who's a student there that will be helping us. So I think I'll actually turn it over to Emily if she wants to ask some of the questions that we need to address tonight.
Thank you. Hi, everyone. Is my microphone working? I just want to make sure.
Yes.
Okay, I've been having issues with my Wi-Fi like usual, so. All right, so we wanted to create questions that prompted people to think about the community and what they live in, how they live in, and how you perceive everything. So some of our biggest questions, we want to expand on the emotion of how you live there and how you feel that the people that you walk by, see with, work with are living. So the first couple ones that I'll start off with is how has housing had an impact on economic growth in Arc City?
Well, I'd say that it slowed it down. I mean, we've got businesses that are short on their employment status they'd like to be at because they can't get enough employees in town. One of the reasons is housing.
We've had that be a couple answers that we've gone by. Anything else?
Functionally... Functionally, it's compound, it's housing aging and standards. Because we don't necessarily, we don't have an appealing housing base. Do have a housing base, but it's not what people typically look for in a progressive city, let me just say it that way. So I think, I think our housing doesn't have that sense of feeling that it needs to be a draw for, for growth and economic growth. That is absolutely correct.
We'll move on to... Okay, do you think the economic well-being of the Arc City community is dependent on improving the local housing situation?
I bet you can speak for a solid half the chair. Well, yes, simply yes, an absolute yes. There's a shortage of housing in every price range, except like Mr. Jennings spoke of the lowest price range. There's an abundance of poor stock. And then a shortage virtually across the board other than that.
It looks like there's a comment also. Okay. All right, and then another question is, do you believe that homelessness is a community issue?
Mr. Jennings, you're the one more involved with that than myself.
Polar vortex in Cali County, the two principal cities. Essentially, we housed over that 10 days 65 persons and we spent, we basically provided somewhere in the neighborhood of about 140 room nights for housing. People who either were living, surviving on the streets, or living in cars, and minus 18 degrees was more of a challenge in what their functional accommodations had created. So yes, we do have, and again, that doesn't address the broader spectrum of homelessness, which is the combined families, folks back with parents, parents with children, friends with friends type of thing, that all qualify in the broader standard for homelessness. You aren't able to provide your own housing for your own family. It's a, it's a significant issue here in the county and in the southern half of the county.
I should have pointed out before we go that this is, this comment period is open to anybody here, not just planning commissioners. So if there's other people that have, that want to speak up, please do.
I would add to the question, or add to the comments made so far, that homelessness, in my brief experience in Arc City, has been manifest mostly with transient populations traveling through, hoping to get assistance here. And in my background in social services, my experience has been, most of the assistance is more readily available in the urban areas. So the transients don't stay here long when they figure out that they might get a little help, but it's not going to be a long-lasting help.
Yeah, we don't have the rehousing resource, and we don't have the long-term housing resource. We basically provide the emergency housing. So it's a minimum number of nights possible. Typically, we use a four-week, well, we get friendly rates because we're a benevolent group with a couple of the hotels here in Arc City, one in Winfield. And they are subsidized by, functionally, by churches, the two alliances, and our partnership this year with the Cali House of Hope, who chose to make a portion of their reserves available to address the homelessness issue. The money that the House of Hope set aside, we actually exhausted that. Probably, we were maybe two days past the worst of that horrible winter storm before we were at zero on their funds. Alliance share that could go to our Kansas City and our problems here.
That's some great information. I do appreciate that. So for my next question is, think about your personal experience, living, working, having friends in the community, and what is special about the Arkansas City community?
What is special about the Arkansas City community? That wasn't intended to be snarky. Might decide it that way. I apologize.
You're okay. I am terrible at public speaking, so.
Somewhere, and that's why I said it wasn't intended to be snarky. What's special is, is the community itself. And like we talked about, what Charles and his group did, that there was a whole group of people that helped with that. When people have problems, this community is going to come together and help them. And that's, you know, one of the great things about this community. One of the things that makes it special, and we embrace that. We don't want to be, you know, some big metropolitan and want to keep that small-town feel. But we have growth that we need to happen to continue to be able to be a vibrant community. And housing is a big part of that.
I'll add that as a relative newcomer to Arc City, I like the small-town feel. And the services here are ex... The services are really improved. And in big cities, you give someone a service and say thank you, and that's just that. My experience with local government and with the retail industry is, you go into Ask for Service, and they not only provide the service, but they make you feel valuable as a customer. They make you, that you actually over and above. In some cases, I've experienced stellar service that I could only hope for in big cities. I've lost an item, and someone found it and turned it into the police department. The city's so small, they called me on the phone and said, "Did you lose this item?" "Oh, yes. Come on down and pick it up." And I did. Anywhere else, I could imagine that the, the item would have been at the pawn shop just pretty quickly, and that would have been that.
I guess, moving from, that was awesome that you were able to get your item back that quickly and that fast. So speaking about personal stories and things that you know of your community, can you provide any examples you are aware of where someone has struggled with inadequate, unavailable, or substandard housing in Arc City? And you don't have to provide names, just stories or personal things that you know of.
Kind of goes back to, to what we talked about. Well, we're comfortable. We're comfortable. And when you're comfortable with things, when you're comfortable in your home, then you tend to, like, you're comfortable leaving something, maybe just, let's just set that there. I'll get back to it later. Who knows what later is, okay? And whether that happens inside a house or outside, we're, we're an incredibly comfortable community. I think our comfort level begins to show up in, in terms of how we care, scruse up, renovate, modernize, how our homes and our, our property. To my knowledge, to my knowledge, there, I'm aware of at least a half dozen people who lived in rental properties where the flooring was separating from the base of the housing to where you could functionally see below the house, the crawl space. We done a phenomenal job with the habitat. They built two properties in one block. Across the alleyway from them was a house where the north wall of the structure was being held up by a 20-foot, probably two-by-four or four-by-four special-made post that they had used, watched it. They used a pickup truck to put the post in the back, back it up so that it pushed the wall back up under the eaves of the ceiling of the roof. And then they guided that post down into the ground where it held that up. So I mean, you can see new, modest, but modernized housing. And look out their back window and see a structure with the large post holding an outer wall up, a structural wall up. So I mean, and so it goes in that fashion, you know. Folks, I've got the people in homes where, again, an observation, the roof needed to be repaired. Property owner of this investment property hired a handyman to paint the roof so that it looked new. And the family that moved into that house, their remedy, once we got to the rainy season, was to go buy that heavy black viscolean material and lay it across the park where the pitched roof adjoining the flat roof. Because inside the house, I ask, when it rained outside, it just ran and cascaded down the wall. Had a limestone foundation, and of course, a limestone foundation that stays saturated for periods of times begins to crumb. Okay, so you just started to see the property two families deep. You started to see that property just kind of cavitating, you know, over like a year's time with that. So you can see, you can see investment in property, and you can see degradation of properties, you know, in the same neighborhood. We, probably the biggest challenge we have, we talked about that a little bit last time, is we have kind of these Frankenstein-type neighborhoods. And you see a really beautiful house here, and then you see that one doesn't belong, you know. We, we learned that in first grade, which one of these three doesn't belong here like that? And so we, we just kind of have, we have that spectrum of housing. So I mean, there's stuff we can stick our chest out at, and then there's stuff that if our family comes to visit from LA, we say, "Don't look that way. Look this way." So we got some good stuff, but we have some, we have some not good stuff, too.
Emily, I'll give you a couple of stories out of COVID and out of the winter storm that we had here. Not directly related to housing issues, but indirectly certainly related to housing issues. And it goes back to the small-town feel, neighbors helping neighbors. Getting through crisis and disaster, COVID happened, it's still happening, and Cali County neighbors helping neighbors popped up on Facebook. "Do you need something? Can, can I go get some milk for you at Walmart? What do you need? You need your prescriptions delivered. What, what do you need?" And people would post their needs in the group, and someone would come along and say, "I'll take care of that for you." In the winter storm, my next-door neighbor shoveled my driveway. The lady across the street had her driveway shoveled. It's just that the little things that, that make Arc City so great, a place to live, and that impacts the willingness, you could have a, a house for everybody, but if the neighbors aren't friendly, they're not going to want, they might want to live here, but they won't stay here long.
Thank, does anyone else have any other stories or personal experiences?
I love this place. That's another story. I love Arc City.
I believe that is all my questions that I personally have to ask, if there are any that need to be added or asked. My stance was more, we are trying to make an emotional connection to this, and we are trying to make sure that Arc City does get the grant that they deserve, because it sounds like we really do need it.
So, so, okay, so that was good. Because if that hurt us, then disregard it.
No, you guys are good. It's, we're hearing a lot of the same instances from around the city that you do want to invest, and you do want to change around how people live and, like, congregate and make friends, make memories, do all that there, so.
And Emily, I'll thank you personally for your help in this matter.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any other thing that they would like to add that we didn't talk about? It's related to the needs.
Other side of this, how housing affects our businesses, growth plan, and like that. So those are things that you can fill out and send in to us.
And for those on the call, I can send that out to you. I have everybody's email address that's on the call, so I can also send this form out to you guys as well.
From a factual side, having rentals, it is very much a need. I have seven that will be open in May, and I fill them within the first week of listing them. So, I mean, that's not a story side of things, but that's just a very factual, real problem.
Those are things we need to know as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anything else?
I might mention, besides this, the housing assessment tool we'll fill out. After this is finished and submitted to Department of Commerce, we're going to do what they call HIAAC. So it's the Housing Interagency Committee. And there'll be, I think, just four different agencies from the state and federal that come together in a room, and we present our, our story through our hat to them. And then they'll provide us feedback as to what kind of programs are available. And so that's a really good, I participated in one in my previous community. We took, we took people from different parts of the community with us, you know, business people, obviously city officials, chamber, that type of thing. At schools, education went with us as well. Told our story to our community, and we got a lot of good feedback on some different programs that we were able to utilize. So this is just a one step in many things to help with housing. So we really appreciate that your feedback and input into this really helps. We may be calling on someone to take trip, if they open it up to a trip to beat this up.
So we need the two-headed monster. We need the two-headed monster. We need the, we need the affordable housing platform, but we also need to upgrade our, as I said, our more modernized and that mid-level type housing. You know, like I said, we just need something that has one posass if we're going to market our community. You know, but we also need the one that says, you know, for the folks who are here, second generation, third generation, fifth generation, whatever, we need the, you know, we're not doing so well. We can't, we can't buy the $5,200, $1,300 house. But we want something that, you know, with modern windows, fairly modern appliances, something to code on, electrical, and things like that, you know, and do that. Just really go about dealing with the people who were homeless that got into emergency housing. We had a few success stories where we were able to fast-track their partnership, our partnership with Midcap, out of, held, housed out of Butler County, El Rey. I think they have an office in Augusta, and they worked really hard. They got some people who were actually, without dwelling, approved for housing subsidy. We were excited about that because they got that from the time we contacted them to the longest, out of the three that I know, the longest was, was seven days, which is unheard of. Typically, your application sits around for two weeks or three weeks before they work. They got approval, and they gave them a range that they could, that they would subsidize. We will pay up to 100%, 100% up to this amount per month. There is a subsequent amount, a supporting amount for utility costs and things like that. But of course, then again, they have standards that you have to meet. It has to be code, plumbing, electrical, things like that have to be code. And they had a problem with finding houses that would pass inspection by the agency that at the same time would satisfy, or that the, that the potential renter then could meet with the allowance that they had and the means that they had. So it was like, if we found something that satisfied Midcap and their criteria, it cost too much. If we found something we could afford, it wasn't to code and acceptable. So, so those folks approved in a week's time. One of them that I know of, because they kind of get, I had to take them down and ask how they'd be going. At least one of the three still hasn't found a place where they were accepted. Someone actually did say they would rent it to them, and then they found out what their personal income looked like, and they said, "No, it can't." Even though, even though the subsidy from Midcap to Midcap would cover the rent, they said, "We can't rent to you because your income, you know, doesn't seem sufficient." They basically didn't want to get in a spot where they were lived, you know. I think that phobia of working with an agency and some sort of public funding system and having difficulties if something came apart with getting that person out of the property. So we have kind of, we have stuff to celebrate, and then we have things like that that are frustrations. It's what we want, you know. What I'm thinking of is mother and daughter. Eleven-year-old girl with her mom, and they're still looking for a place to live because their mom's income doesn't satisfy the landlord's criteria. And where they did find somebody, "Sure, we got a place for you." When they came out to give inspection, they said, "We will pay for you to rent that property."
There's a whole other side of things to that, though. As a landlord, we appear cautious because we have the higher-end properties. So where we have people like that come and talk to us, we want nothing to do with that because they're very hard to remove them from the property. So there's two sides to that. If we were just, I mean, you could go broke just trying to take care of people. And we try our best to take care of people, but there's two sides to that. If the, if the subsidy people drag their feet, we still get caught holding the bag. we still get caught holding the bag, you know? And I tell this to my renters, "We can go to our bank and say, 'Checks in the mail,'" right? Because the bank's going, "Doesn't matter, we still need that money," so...
But you can do anything you want.
We've been trying for a couple of times.
So you've already done your week?
We have. We have tried, and we try to work with many people as best as possible. We've even bought low-rent rentals to try to, you know... We have a huge range of rentals now.
And the tight housing market gives you less incentive to take those. Because you're going to fill it anyway. So why take one of those? And that's what we're just talking about, is how tight the entire housing market is across the board. I mean, the house is out to the United States. Those are turning quickly as well, right?
Well, that's what I was going to talk about. It's not the higher end. So if you really want to stimulate, you have got to have those higher-end houses. Because these people are going to come into town, and they're going to want to stimulate the economy. Who knows? You could get another brand inserted in town who love the community and wants to buy every property and make it better. You don't know what kind of people want to move into town, but there... My Realtor called me before I got here and said, "There's someone who wants to come from Pumica to move here, but I don't build custom homes anymore." And people are so backed up, so they want to move into this community, but they need the $300,000 or $400,000 houses, right?
So yeah, that's why I said the two-headed monster.
It is.
Because we have this strata in market. You know, we have a need for what you just said. You know, that 2K plus housing that we need to develop a base of here. But at the same time, we really do need to have the things for the people who are the, you know, minimum wage-type incomes but still don't need to sleep under a bridge in minus 20 degrees, you know? So we had a strategy where we could be talking about an affordable housing initiative married to a modernization, an upgrade of housing inventory that appeals to a little bit stronger economic base. That would be, you know... Other than that, I'm not asking for anything.
And it's a lot about trying to change the culture a little bit. So our apartments here in town that are a little bit... I wouldn't say they're low-end, but they're on the lower side. When we bought them, they were unlivable, but they were full. And it was hideous what people were living in. And we have a lot of those people that, as we pick them up and we move them over, but they don't understand, "If your soap isn't working, tell me and fix it." Or I'll get you a new one. And so it's changing that culture of like, "You take care of it, and we take care of you, and we work together, and you have a nice place to live." And that's been the biggest challenge, honestly.
So we have an educational piece we need to... In terms of that?
Absolutely.
Well, before we totally leave this... Go ahead.
On the other end of that spectrum, when we talk about affordable housing, we mentally almost immediately go to the low-income. 60 Minutes Sunday, I hope Emily will watch that. There was a segment about the housing market and how hot it is and how explosive the housing prices have become. And on the same token, the competition among the buyers, still yet even for the higher-priced properties, there's competition for buyers that can't... They get outbid by other buyers, and they're just struggling to find affordable housing even at that price.
What I was starting to say, one of the groups that I invited to this was utilities, and we haven't talked about them at all. But the one that's here, that's actually represented today is Cox Communications. And I thought it was interesting to have them here because as we've been through this COVID era and we had all of these students that were stuck at home, we had a huge problem with not having broadband infrastructure in some of our homes. Now, some of that was happening outside of the city limits, which is, I'm guessing, mostly outside of their territory. But I just wonder if there's... If we have a conversation about what it could take to either have them move outside of the city or bring in other providers that could assist with that a little bit. I was hoping that schools would be here tonight to talk about some of that need. But I thought that was kind of interesting that that dynamic developed and it let us know that there is an infrastructure problem that's more than just your typical stuff like water and sewer and electric. That's infrastructure like broadband has actually become just as important as electricity for most households now. And we still have areas, I think even inside the city limits, that don't actually have adequate services in that area. I don't have anything more to add.
Unless our representatives have anything to add.
Hi, this is Megan Bottenberg. I'm the Director of Government Affairs for Cox Communications. And joining me is Cody Corbett. He is with our construction and planning team. And, you know, on that note, we would be happy to sit down with you all and look at where you think the needs are, what you're hearing, and we can take a look at our maps and see whether we're there or not. You know, oftentimes, when I talk to communities, there's both... There's two issues when it comes to broadband. One, there is an access issue. Do they have access? Do they have the fiber line or broadband capabilities right there at their home? You know, maybe some of those locations outside of the city limits do not have that. And we would certainly work with you all to explore the different options and the different barriers that may face us as we look at that. And one of those barriers could be cost. But again, we would work with you all on that. The second issue, too, is also adoption. So if they have the broadband capabilities coming to their home, what is the reason as to why they haven't adopted a broadband plan or program? And so we would also be happy to work with you. There have been programs put in place with the state during the pandemic that provided partnerships and assistance to school districts to help provide internet with providers, one of which was Cox. I don't think we worked with your school district specifically. However, you know, again, it's an adoption issue. And how do we make broadband, you know, affordable? What are the barriers as to why people aren't signing up? It could just be an education issue as well. So happy to have those discussions more in-depth with you. And I think that would probably be the best route to go on that. But of course, we are happy to be a part of the solution. We partnered with the state earlier this year in terms of both adoption and access by expanding our service area to five different areas across the state. So again, always looking for opportunities.
Thank you.
That's kind of what I was asking for.
Does anybody else have anything related to housing that we... that's on their chest that they just say, "Yeah"? Speak louder, everyone.
Oh, we have the water service expansion. In fact, we do.
We can talk about housing all day long, but someone still has to build them. You know, so you can figure out the greatest idea in the world, but you have no one to unlock the caps to do it. So you have a lot of wealthy people in town. No one's spending any of the money to develop, right? So I think that's a bigger issue. How do we find people that are willing to invest? Because you can make money on real estate. You can make a lot of money.
It's not just invest. It's actually building as well. As you all know. This is... We have a shortage of people that are willing to do or capable of and willing to do work. So there's another thing that we have to tackle to tackle this. It's not just the money. I think we can find the money for some of the private investment, for the more, the higher-end stuff, not the, you know, the lower-end affordable housing we're talking about, but finding the builders that will do that right now. How do we solve that issue?
Well, there's such a backlog on supplies.
And supplies as well, yeah. That's a whole different issue that we cannot tackle. There's nothing that we can do about that.
And that affects your builders and your retailers.
Yeah.
And the affordable housing?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's affordable.
Well, and again, functionally, I think this is a chicken and an egg type thing, okay? Because functionally, what you're talking about, then there's someone who wants to do volume. We have a few folks who go around and build a house at a time, you know? Maybe buy a distressed property, take down the structure, and build on it, you know? Okay, so pretty... Yeah, that's a house at a time. That doesn't satisfy a community need. So when you're talking about maybe one or two things is either underdeveloped, which is an infrastructure piece, you know, making sure we do have the support, we have the trafficway, we have the municipal utility, we have the other things that would support growth in that area, like we're doing on what support we place.
Come to the point.
There we go, thank you. Yeah, that type of thing. So, you know, that dialogue, I think, has been ongoing. But to see that replicated, then we do need to have something that says, "We got places to build, you know, and we got folks looking for housing." And so I think when that's it, when we see that piece in you, all of a sudden, have the potential to draw someone who wants to come in and do volume. Closest we've had to that is the North Eighth Street that was underwritten by Eck out of Wichita. They came down and built that two blocks worth of houses, you know, basically, and they kind of infilled that, you know? But functionally, then we go back to, "I buy land, I want a house, I build a house," you know? But not... We're not talking about taking and prepping, you know, how many acres and saying, "We're going to put new properties there and all in a ranch," you know? Whether they're $80,000 to $120,000 houses, or $200,000 houses, to a half-million-dollar house, whatever your spectrum is. And you want to say, "Okay, if you have..." If you have 20 homes or 50 homes that you want to build in an area, the space to do it, then that's a different appeal to someone who might look at coming to Cali County, Arkansas City, to build versus saying, "We want to build three houses on this street out here, and we want you to come from Arkansas to Arkansas City to..."
And that's a story.
I think she's lost. But, you know, what I'm saying, to get someone to come here, bring any equipment, to come up, set up nexus here, and actually plan on building and making it profitable.
But sometimes you have to finance that.
Yeah, yeah. So I'm saying, so now we're back to the whole, "What's the plan?" thing, you know?
Because we have plenty of failed developments.
Yeah, yeah.
But we have plenty of them. So, and there's four builders talking to the club right now. It's going to start to pick up out there. So we have building places. You just don't have people that want to build. So, but you start putting houses out there, and people get excited, so...
Okay, Karen, come. I'm sorry. Don't pay any attention to me. The rest of us don't. Anyway, okay. So, yeah, it's a kind of a little bit... What's the whole strategic approach to what we do? We don't have people lining up with U-Haul fans saying, "We're building this pop stand and moving to..." You know, so, you know, we have people who are committed to here, you know? In all spectrums, economic, environmental, economic spectrum. We have that. We don't have a flight thing about to happen. So now we just need to say, "What do we do and how do we go about doing it?" So that we, you know, so that we don't... We don't get way out ahead of things. At the same time, we don't continue to languish, you know, behind and miss opportunities. What we don't want to do, what we don't want to do to U-Haul, you know, in your commitment, is we don't want to miss opportunities.
Well, I thank everybody that was participating today. I think we've got some good information. We'll put that into the plan, and Emily will do it right after. We'll move on from that. I believe, too, that we can use some of the results from the housing assessment tool and bring it back into our comprehensive plan chapters. We'll use the findings that we come out of it, that come out of this to add to that chapter, too. I think that we're ready to move on to our next item.
Economic development.
So last month, I kind of introduced this. We had a little bit of discussion. We had housing discussions before this last month, too.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Welcome to staying and talking about this part, too. Do you have a business card? Do you have a business card?
Only because I'm interested in it, huh? He's asking for a business card. This might be a trend for him.
Part of what I talked about was some of the assets that we have as a community. We have made up our parks out of a number of employers that are already taking care of some of our needs. And about some of the programs that we have as well. Tonight, I was hoping to kind of shift into what we've seen in the past plans and some of the information that came from past surveys. But in addition to that, we have invited Kerry Fletti with Cali First back, so we can get a little bit more information, if we need it, about what's happening right here in Cali County. And then I also have invited Marla Enfield with Kansas Department of Commerce. Economic development is her area of expertise up there, and she can talk to us a little bit about what sort of offerings that we have available and maybe... Whatever we need. She's an expert on economic development at the state. So she can help answer any questions that she might have. I guess we could start with that. Marla, she'd like us to know about. I gave a copy of this chapter to her to preview before the meeting. So if you have anything to say, we can start with that.
Well, I just want to thank you for having me. I am the In-State Business Development Manager for South Central Kansas. So I cover 16 counties surrounding South Central Kansas, surrounding Sedgwick County. I do not cover Sedgwick County. And my home base is actually Butler County. So I live and work out of Butler County. And because I started talking, and it's dinner time, my dog decided to join me. So I apologize for the clicking of the feet as I speak. What we do as In-State Business Development Teams is work very closely with the local government or local economic development directors. So we're very closely with Kerry in helping your communities retain your businesses as well as any business doing any kind of an expansion or hiring. Commerce has programs available pretty specific to manufacturing, distribution, warehousing. There are a couple of industries that just don't qualify, for instance, such as construction companies, religious organizations, nonprofits, and retail, pretty much in general, won't qualify for our business incentives. But our goal is to help offset any costs associated with an expansion project. We have corporate tax credits. We give it back to companies. There are self-tax exemption certificates. So our main role is to really be a partner So our main role is to really be a partner through your community in helping you retain those businesses. We firmly believe and know that retention of your current industries is one of the best things that you can do as a community to keep your economic development resources robust and to keep your people in your community. So we do have a very large recruitment team as well. They are located throughout the U.S. So as they hear about big projects, Carrie will ensure response to those. But we really do believe in keeping our current businesses. You know, it's great to land a big project, but those don't come around every day. So we're here just to help and to be a partner and to help connect to the businesses.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to kind of come back to what I started to say earlier. Economic development, just like Alvin, is something that's been an issue since, by the beginning of the town. So this is nothing new. But when the 2003 plan was done, there was an expert in there from the 1996 plan. And if you look at some of the recommendations in that section, they're pretty much the same things that were still done with. Talking about regional and area-wide, public-private partnerships, vertical integration of existing manufacturers and their suppliers and education related to that. And then what's interesting too is this last part, data gathered in the mid-1990s for this plan, the 1996 plan, tended to indicate that a number of new or replacement jobs in the community are at or near the minimum wage level. We still have some of that issue. Future job creation efforts should focus on higher paying quality of jobs. That sounds pretty familiar. That's the stuff that we're still issued in twenty-five years later, whatever it is. So that was, so there's some stuff even as far back as the 96th plan. There's some good tidbits that we can still use. Obviously, in the 1990s, where you had much different problems than we have now. But they were, we, they're different, but they're the same. I don't know how else to say that. Then there was another plan done in 2010 called the Vision 2020 Community Plan. That kind of went over this a little bit more. Carrie, was that a plan that you were involved in?
Actually started in 2005. 2010 was the five-year renewal.
Okay. Then I'm guessing that the 2010 version is what was mentioned in here just because of like we did this plan. So, was there anything that you remember from either of those plans that kind of is still true?
Well, I mean, and we did a revamp of the surveys in 2015 as well. And really, basically, the same issues are still. I mean, I think every time the shortage of good jobs was number one. I mean, those top ones just, five years incremental, they just kind of adjusted. So it was still just that top. Lack of housing was one that came up as we went through as well. So, but just the same kind of things, homegrown business industry should be supported. But, you know, it's hard to find those folks that want to start those jobs, those businesses. But, yeah, it's kind of just a lot of the same information. So, looking back at, you know, you're done with the same things. I have the 1971 plan and workforce and housing.
Yes, but it's the same base. Those don't change, not just for our community, but for every community. And those are the things that every community, no matter how successful the community is, those are the same things that they all want. That doesn't mean we shouldn't go after this. I mean, that is, it's not going to change. We do those surveys a million times. We actually have to do something that, that 2020 plan has got it dust effectively since 2005. More or less, it's not really been active.
Yeah, and there's different, a lot of different, so it ended up having five focus areas. So some obviously were like, the Rise Cali came out of that, so our health of communities. The economy section is my program at work. So you do what you can to help start the entrepreneurs. But, you know, everybody wants to see that next great big, like Marla referred to, you know, what's the next big thing? Well, we don't have buildings, we barely have land and we have no workforce. So, I mean, yeah, they are few and far between and you have got to have money. So it's kind of that thing. It's just the maintenance of course, so a lot of the energy is supporting our local. We have got to keep them.
Yep.
And that is so key. So, yeah, and then there's some other portions of that, definitely. So that's why, yeah, a lot of, a lot of things where you get that energy, but where you have that passion, that's where you see the energy going. So the housing portion of that, the place, it's so, it's been so hard. It just, which is why it's so hard to see or make, make movement until you have folks like the jobless coming in.
Right, right. If everyone's known this has been an issue, it's nice to have somebody who's going to actually, who is putting this on the forefront and the front burner and ready to do something about that. Because we've talked about this for, since I was a kid. So, I mean.
Targeted talking about it, let's do something.
I, I know my mouth runs a lot, but I don't just talk. I'm ready to do something. So.
Do, maybe there's some county maker places and some incubator spaces for, for entrepreneurs who want to get going?
There does, nothing exists and we've talked about it, but it all goes back to money. Because you have to have somebody to build it and let them utilize it for rent-free, provide the services. And we've talked, I mean, we've had, with Mark and his group a couple of times and different just about how do we make it happen, but somebody's got to buy the building. There used to be, oh my God, it's probably, and Marla maybe remembers more, when they used to have some funds and there were some programs to really help those incubators. But I think all of those, I mean, it was, it was a fad there for.
Oh, yeah, it was, it was incubator space, that was a thing. And then it just went, gone.
Exactly.
And there was funding at one point for that because we talked about that a lot. And then there were. Went to bigger cities, I think was the deal.
So I think I think Kansas City area, they got some big stuff. Wichita has big stuff, but it's small communities that tried it.
Kansas City has several of them now and it just seems to, I wonder what comes out of it.
I wonder about maybe a smaller program with community college, kind of like.
We've talked about it, yeah.
You know, they have their.
Yep, we've talked about it.
I think Cali would be interested in that, but they lack space. They need the space.
Because I think probably about the time we started talking was about the time they started talking about Sumner County. And that kind of has, I mean, that has had their.
That's all the air, everything they wanted to.
So that's been two years. So, but.
Yeah, and I would say too, I think a lot of the maker spaces or entrepreneurial space, you know, a lot of the focus I've seen going now to how do you recruit people to come to your community that have tech jobs, that can work from home and, and live back in your community again. So how do you recruit those folks who may have lived in Ark City at one point, who now have tech-type jobs, who might be able to be recruited back to your community? I know the community of Hutchinson actually, through COVID, had a lot of people relocate at their golf course who had played at their Prairie Dunes at one point and really liked it. Weren't from Kansas, weren't from Hunt. But they had five or six people move to Hutch out of Prairie Dunes because their jobs allowed them to work anywhere. And they decided they want to relocate back from, or into Kansas so that they can play golf on a regular basis. So I think just being creative even into, you know, what your community has to offer somebody and kind of some of your quality of life, things that might attract somebody looking for a different change of pace or a new scenery.
I could tie back to the lady with the cops a minute ago about, if there is, the lady just reported.
Right.
I heard that, that's, that's been a very popular recruitment strategy. Because there's, with all the COVID and stuff, there's those folks that are wanting to get out of the cities. You can work for them, it's.
Anywhere.
You can go anywhere.
Yeah, and COVID has taught people that they can work anywhere now and a lot of jobs. And I think we're just going to see more and more of that. We do have to make sure that we have an infrastructure to support that. And that, once again, that's hot, to make sure that we're covered properly so they can do that.
I think that's the first I could get out of that enough with, actually.
Commerce does have two, our office of broadband. So, and I'm sure Carrie has been in communication, but Stanley Adams is, is who runs that office. And he's our, he's our broadband expert. He's the one who's implemented a lot of those programs with the CARES Act throughout Kansas and getting connections back out there and, and helping build some infrastructure. So I would definitely happily introduce you to Stanley or get connected to Stanley and see what might be available or what might be coming down the pipe. Because, you know, we just don't know federally what funds may hit us next and, and how they'll implement those. The broadband has been identified by Commerce and now has its own department focusing on that. So he's a great resource.
Okay, continuing on with the plans, there was another one done in 2007. And if you have any, same stuff up the screen there. I'll kind of glaze over that one because the 2013 survey is going to be more relevant than that one is. In 2013, of course, we did a survey that, for the entire comprehensive plan, but there was a pretty good section on economic development. You can see through some of those tables on the next page about some of the different things that, that the city should focus on or promote. Fashion is up pretty high, details is pretty significant. Then, of course, there's several that are a little less important to the respondents. But that doesn't mean they're not important because they all contribute to why somebody would want to locate their business here. Like your tourism, your healthcare, your entertainment, your transportation, those sorts of things. This is kind of actually significant that seven out of ten respondents approved at least some city-initiated promotion for all of those categories. So they, the respondents wanted the city to do something in virtually everything that's listed in those A through L's on the end of the page. So, we have the support of the citizenry to, not necessarily fund it, but support it in whatever way we can. It's, we don't have, we're very popular. That's the actual funding of it and that might be a different story. How much taxes people are willing to pay to help recruit businesses is a totally different story. But that's the next table. It talks about where we should use funds. A couple of them that are, that are kind of the stronger ones. Encourage job creation through local business expansion, which is a topic we've already talked about this evening. Encourage new businesses. We talked about the incubator possibilities. So that's something that people would be willing to, to fund. Encourage Cali College to train, educate the local workforce. We briefly talked about that. Utilizing our existing resources to help our businesses to train up their skilled workforce is also important. See, what else do we got here? Forty percent of, well, I guess that's a little less. Talks about pursuing more retail development. So, and we've done some of these things to different degrees. Currently, we have a consultant that we're working with for retail development in particular. So that's, that's something that we are actively doing. Attempting to fill in some of our spaces. Of course, last month, we talked about this a little bit too, if I remember correctly, about dealing with spaces like Bill Walgreens Building, Dollar General, Country Mark Building. Those are all incredibly difficult spaces to fill because retailers kind of have a niche and they have certain things they, they want to go into. So some, a place like Country Mark is going to be challenging because it's an existing building, it, it has its share of issues. It's a good, it's got good bones, certainly. But it's an older building and sometimes people don't like that. It's big, it's really big. So, there's different things we can look at there. Dividing it up into smaller pieces might be an option, for example.
There, there we, we've got to be innovative or we're going to keep, you know, we're going to keep, the coyote's going to keep falling on the same boat. See, when you say that, we don't want Walgreens, I mean Walgreens. We don't want, but we don't want Walgreens to become the new Country Mark. Because Country Mark became the new Salvation Army building. Salvation Army building became the new, what do we call that grocery store out there that the church is using about twenty percent?
Village Market.
Village Market, you know. So, so we keep getting these that, that functionally, because distressed properties, they fall into the hands of people either, well, let me go back one more. Village Market became the new AC office building. You know, where you either have someone with deep pockets who basically will eat the loss, you know, and use that for a tax write-off. Or we have people who are anemic and their, and their resources, where they can get in a building, but they can't really do anything with it. They give it new life, you know, so.
Yeah, but an underutilized building.
Yeah, so you have, you have, what we don't want is, we don't want Country Mark to, to, to take on the same type of service that the Salvation Army building currently uses.
And that is, and that is so key. We've got, so we're working, I mean, we've been working very diligently on getting our building list for both our city and Hattie. In our city, we probably have, I mean, we probably have thirty, thirty-five buildings we're tracking in our city that either appear to be vacant, have a red sign or have a realtor sign. Half of those maybe we have. So we have our database and it's our online, it's a national site selector source. So we put all these buildings on, so it's, we can't know that he will respond. And the sad thing, when you're driving down Summit, you're like, man, that'd be great, that'd be great. But owners aren't taking care of them, they don't care, they, it's write-off. So it's impossible to get somebody in a building when you don't know what the situation is, whereas there is absolutely no interest in selling the building. It just sits so, it's, that's why Ashlyn's been, you know, well, she, not every week, she's reaching out again, hey, call it again, just call it again, leaving messages to try it. If you get our information, get the information, we'll get it listed, we'll get marketing it. But we need to know what the status is of the building. So if it needs a new roof and you're not willing to put on a new roof, we can't in good faith list that building because we know it, it's not occupiable. So, and it's, we have a lot of buildings.
That people don't, if you try to rent or buy or something and they will not contact you back.
They will not at all.
It's bizarre, really bizarre.
All of these things we do for free resources for any business or building. So we, you know, all of the realtors, we know them all, we talk to them all. So as soon as they have a building, they let us know. And they, I mean, they're, will even say, do you know anything about this building next door to the one you list? And we say, I don't know, but I'll try to find out. So, I mean, we, oh my goodness, are we trying. But, because when somebody calls me and says, you know, I think it'd be a great idea, I want to start a, start a business. And you've got to be able to say, okay, how many offices, what kind of square foot, what do you need to do so you can match them with the right building? So.
No, that's.
That's what we're looking for.
That's what we're talking, that's what we're going to talk about, Carrie.
I know, it kind of just makes me sound, you know, think back to the landlord, the robes or the homes. If you want to invest in it.
Let me see what else is important. Oh, we, we wouldn't be a comprehensive plan discussion if we didn't use some of the comments from the previous survey. Some of them are which are funny almost. But, but I think it's kind of neat because these are candid people that actually got to say what they thought. So one says, we need more manufacturing, we need more jobs to keep people working close to home. That's like what we're talking about.
We have so many jobs, so many jobs.
Yeah.
Because that's the thing, we have, we have too many jobs.
We have people.
So many jobs.
Yeah, no, that's not the thing.
They tell you there's no jobs. I bet you did the survey, they would say there are no jobs.
Yep.
And I will make a difference.
Yeah, everybody wants to hire right now, they just can't find bodies.
I really liked the last sentence. I really liked the last sentence of that response. Keep your kids here where they can make a good living and your town will grow on its own. I think we don't have truth to that.
Sure.
And that's a whole nother conversation. It's how do we keep our high school graduates in our community and college graduates for that matter? But it starts with the high school age. How in the world do we keep them here?
Why we take COVID, but every chance we get to get those business owners, small, medium, large, in the schools and get those kids out and looking at every business and seeing every opportunity. I hope we can get back to some of that next year.
Even during COVID, some of the stuff they've done, like I have a high school student. It's just interesting, the different tracks that they currently have in the high school. Something that I wish I would have had when I was in high school. Just didn't exist twenty years ago. Another one says, if the city is doing a good job maintaining services, economic development will happen.
It just happened? That's the, what's that movie? Field of Dreams? I don't think that's how that works.
Yeah, I think that was a nice movie though.
It was a very good movie, but. But, yeah. That'd be nice if that was the case, but we wouldn't be having this discussion.
This next one kind of goes back to what we were just talking about. The jobs are there. I wonder if some of this is just people not willing to work in certain industries. Because it's talking about, we need greater opportunity for jobs that pay outrageous. But I would argue that some of our bigger employers actually do.
This last year, they raised two, three dollars an hour starting. I mean, they have had to. And then you've got the companies that are raised, so the other company raises, so they have to raise again. So they're raising, so now they're raising. And then they're going to do you a thousand dollar bonus. Well, they'll give you a bonus if you're a foreign employee, maybe it's.
We heard something interesting yesterday. I thought it was interesting from Jeff Bowman, our hospital CEO, saying that they were trying to get, I think, was it nurse practitioners?
Travel nurses.
Traveling nurses. They were offering like $250 an hour and that still wasn't enough. They could not get them to come. And so they actually had paid somebody to live at the hospital. That was the extra little thing that put them over the top.
The issue that they're fighting is some of the same issues as $250. That traveling nurses, they want to go to fun places. They have things to do. That's why they do that job. So even at $250 an hour, so what, I don't want to be there. I can go get, you know, have that somewhere else. And so when we have a discussion about economic development, we have to talk about, and I know the city's kind of working on this, some consultant, about bringing in things to do, restaurants and retail and things like that. So that's a big part of where we're at as far as our economic development goes, is bringing in the workers to get to fill these jobs. But we have to have things for them to want to come to. We got to take care of the housing because we're not going to go without a place to live. But then to get them to want to come, we've got to have a focus on bringing in some more retail stuff. I know we've got a consultant that's working on that. I don't know what the status of that is at all. I haven't heard anything, but.
It's hard.
It is hard, it is hard.
We get used to using that term just close enough to Wichita, but just far enough kind of thing. And I think people are like, I'm just going to go to this, live in Derby, you know?
Right.
So, because Derby is growing. So it used to be that thing of we could just say, you know, run up there real quick. But I don't think that's going to, we can't do that much.
Derby flipped its appeal by building a hotel and a hospital at. Those were the two things that when we were part of, and here's, I'm going to do my zinger here. I think we're, we don't play small ball, okay? We don't do that well at all. We don't get a single and a single and a single and just move people around the bases. We're home run hitters. And so the last time we had this huge energy towards growth and progression goes all the way back to those handful of investors that brought us the project Future Beef. Okay? They had leveraged $110 million to build a plant, you know? And then you could, all of a sudden, everybody gets excited, you know? Well, what about the local contractors? You guys don't use, oh, yeah, we'll use the local contractors. And that's actually the time when that came down and built those houses out on North A Street. Can't even comprehend of it now, but that little house in Forest Glen, okay? That's also the time that the multifamily unit housing on Skyline Road was constructed, you know? And so it was like, all of a sudden, hey, there's money flowing through here. We did it. Now, the next one, in my opinion, was ten years later, when we finally put shovel and dirt and two years later came up with South Central Kansas Medical Center, you know? And built that facility with the open expectation. And it didn't happen overnight. A lot of things had happened in between, but functionally we brought in more. When before, North City had an orthopedic surgeon, okay? But we're bringing in that kind of medical resource, you know? It's another way to, you know, but we hit those. We just need to have our strategy that says we need to get, let's get another mental base. Get another mental base. The next time we hit a home run, why not let it be a slant? Why not have all the place? And somebody comes along, swings a bat and we bring them all home and they work. So then all that gives credibility. Which one are we going to do? You know, increase our retail base, you know, have kind of mid-level eateries around? Put a moratorium on new hamburger places? You know, but just, you know, but just let's go with, you know? Chili's, the potatoes, Olive Garden, those types of things, you know? They're not the top of the line, but they are the go-in and sit-down, you know? Right now, Olive Garden doesn't have, I don't think. They don't have a place where you can drive around and they hand you your meal in the sack out the window.
They bring it out to you.
But functionally, those places where people are planning to go in, sit down and have a meal to, for a family, or whatever it is, that next, we need to just decide what's next and have it there in place so that when we get the next, who's, oh, I'd love to live there, but they got no place to eat. I'd love to live there, but look at the housing inventory. They got all those old style houses around and all the, I mean, look at what people put in houses, how houses are built now and the features that are in them, you know? And so we have available housing. I hope that I didn't offend them. Because I was trying to paint both sides of the brush, you know? In terms of the high-end, low-end type thing, you know? But I'm just saying, so that, but we need to say, okay, hey, let's get on base. What is that? Is that housing? Is it retail? But let's pick it. And then let's say, how about we drive this one and just get them on first? You know, you guys, everybody watches, everybody watches some baseball. And how many times you get a man on first and he, we don't score, you know? So I'm just saying, but that's the nature of the game. Not everybody gets a first, gets back home, you know, in the same inning. You know, but if you never get to first, guess where you don't get back to? You know, you just go back to the dugout. So at some point in time, we got to learn to get better at small ball. But sometimes, you know, something like that. But we have to cut some things down and then say, which one are we going to focus on now? You know, and I loved, I loved the model we did with, I'm sorry, 30 seconds? The chair and those 30 seconds?
Absolutely, but only 30 seconds.
Only 30 seconds, overtime? I loved what we did, kind of what we call future business history, which was to say, what is this company going to look like in 25 years? Let's visit, let's dream. And they said, okay, if we're going to be that in 25 years, where do we need to be in 20 years? Where do we need to be in 15 years? Where do we need to be in eight years? Where do we need to be in four years? And then they say, what do we need to be doing now if we're going to get to four? So that we can get to eight, so we can get to 15, so we can.
I like that. I like the actual setting of goal.
And what did you say, future business?
Future business history is what we call it. Say you could call it future community history. It says, this is where we want to be.
Set that.
But we're not going to get from here to there without the incremental steps. So we just walk it back and say, what do we need to be doing next? What do we need to be doing now?
Right. Set an actual goal, tie a table of where we want to be at and then all the steps to get there. You don't do things without a goal. Things don't just happen. Set a goal, go after it sometimes. That's what we need to decide for this is, what's that goal? When do we want that goal set up?
Well, how do you measure the goal? Is it increased businesses? Is it increased population? Is it increased taxpayers? What is it?
Well, that's what we need to discuss. That's what we need to figure out. It's what is that goal? Is that goal to, you know, increase housing tax or is it? But many areas, you know, retail, why?
Sure.
If we find one more, if we find one more 300 to 600 employer, we're going to grow. Okay? And if, you know, so then you want to say, well, if we brought more families into the community, do we want to, do we, do we want to endure another cycle of people saying those houses on the north edge of our city known as Quell Ridge? It's actually just the north perimeter of our city. Our influence goes all the way to there. You know, do we want people to go there and by the level of housing that they want there? Because they can't find it here, you know? So you, I mean, you're set. So all of those things are, what is it? That's the whole idea of walking it back. What would we, what are we going to look like? Our population is going to grow up by 15%, or 40%, or 5% or whatever. What do we do then, you know? I know we began with what he said about, you know, the north edge, the bridge. But based on trajectories of our two communities, that is something we have to think about. It is, you know, there's housing stock in Winfield that is city idol effectively. I mean, they have, you know, drive-by this guy, how many, for sale signs do they have that's running right now? It's a lot. So I feel that's.
And we just made a motion to adjourn by leaving the meeting, so.
We officially don't have a quorum anymore.
We keep talking.
So we can talk, there's no action.
Yes, exactly. But there's no more action to take anyway. So we are effectively out of the meeting now that he's gone. But as long as you're willing to stay and chat for a little bit, we'll stay and chat for a little bit.
I yield the last three seconds of my time. Three second, I think it was three seconds, right?
I extended your time. I'll take the three second time.
If I could just say one thing, we've been talking to, what, four or five boards about conference plans. We're going on six months now. I'd like to thank you because that's the first concrete thing that I've heard from any of them. When I've been asking, what do we change from 13? I don't want to remake my 13 plan. How do we make it work? So I would say, yeah, that goals and actions on every chapter is very vague and they could be moving signposts that many of them have not been achieved. So it sounds like what you're talking about is smart objectives.
Exactly, it's, exactly.
Achievable, realistic and a timeless.
Exactly.
And I think that is something we need to do when we build this out.
A goal can't be a vague, that's what you're saying. To some point, and it's not a goal.
Yeah, it's because of staff perspective. If you give us that, we can put that in a 10-year CIP model that we already use. But I think we've got a disconnect between how we internally plan and this plan.
Do you want to write these? This is my second time doing this. I mean, do you want to write these so it looks pretty to someone to kind of pick it up and read it? The only people that really matters to are people that are going to actually do this. They need to know what needs to be stepped. No one who fixes up, reads this, go, oh, well, that's a good reason I moved to our city. Does that all sound silly to them?
Yeah, you need, you need to write it for the commission and the staff.
Exactly.
For the next city manager and the next city manager, or else you're going to lose that copy of your mission.
Exactly. And this needs to be something that the staff and the diversity boards can act on and see what the next thing that we need to do is. And not just be this, you know, 200-page ad for our city.
If you ever thought about a career as a conference consultant? A career makes good money.
I don't know if I even talked to Mr. Conference, though.
That's true, because, you know, it's kind of that thing for us. It's like thinking, I was like, okay, does this mean I'm okay to work on our retail project or am I not? I mean, so that's kind of the quality of life. I'm just getting to these real quick because you think economic development, you think manufacturing. But economic development is so much more.
Exactly.
It's the community development, it's the retail. I mean, it is, but really this is, it really is that manufacturing base. And if you intentionally put this quality of life and saying, we need to put efforts in the retail or the development of this piece instead of, yeah, it being very vague. Because then you can take it out like, hmm, do I, don't I, can I, can I not, you know? So that's very important.
He needs to be clear that that is a part of.
Because it is.
Building that base.
Doing everything to everyone instead of what we need.
Yeah, right.
Right, so you, so you come across the deep pockets guy that has an idea of business plan. It sounds vital. Looking for someplace potential for growth, that's what I'm trying to, you know? You want to impress them, you know, this. Bring them in the community, or you take them to dinner in Southern Cali County to impress them.
You and Pam just ran into this, didn't you?
We're going to Pam's house.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
Yeah, so, so, so then is that need.
Ended up at somebody else's house too, actually.
Yeah. So maybe we need, you know, to start with something like retail and at least mid-level dining.
Yeah, the families, I mean, that has been talked about for, you know, how much we need for quite some time. Not so much the fast food.
We have sufficient fast food, but.
There's actually more market room for it.
Yeah, and that's what I was going to say. We had consultants until that got next that wanted to bring in a burger king. Because he did the numbers and said, I can do this and I can make it work.
Worked on that one, but okay.
Yeah, you know, so, I mean, it just was, where are you taking? With which dog? Some place like Dean's Dog to talk about our city?
Because we don't have to go that far.
Do we? We have to, you know, we got a good thought this year.
We don't take them out of county.
Just saying.
Oh, my God, that's like, no.
We need something here, so they don't just take them to Chindig's a little bit.
And the right thing will work here. He's just like over in Tampa, that little TS four thing with, you know? That's a little bitty town and look what draws people from all over. You just got to find that right person and right.
Right. Right on that. We've had people that know how to run a restaurant and we've done it. We have people that know how to make food, but don't know how to run a restaurant. And they all fail. You have to be able to do both.
Or at least people like to ask for the help and listen.
Yeah, exactly.
If it's offered.
Right, right. And that has, that has been an issue for multiple restaurants that are trying to.
That is part of the strategic approach. There's the fundamental person who can run the business, that's the business. Keep, to build, to grow and build, you know? Keep a customer base, I'm just saying. You know, so, I mean, and that's, that's the, if you, I'm kind of like eight steps out of it. But if you, if you talk about, this is where we want to be in the year 2040, you know? And you don't have people who say, well, I'm not going to be here in 2040, why do I care? You know? But you do that and you say, okay, that was our plan in 2021. Our target is 2040 to have, to be ready to have somebody showing to make that again, okay? So then what we need to do, well, go ahead. The front end of that is to say, you need to have a neat place if they were a family person. You have a neat place to take the kids and play in the water, you know? Get wet on a hot summer day and end the day with a nice restaurant where they put fresh linen on the table before you come out, sit down. And then you get all of that stuff. They have a nice little bar area. You can go sit down until your table is ready if you have to wait. And all of those amenities. And we sit down and talk to them about this community thought. And that's one of the reasons why you want to consider, you know, in the next five years, putting your new small ops production facility in our.
And we sit down and talk to them about this community thought. And that's one of the reasons why you want to consider, you know, in the next five years, putting your new small ops production facility in our community. Play water, you know? We've got a housing strategy coming up, you know, so you have people moving here, they'll be able to move in the new, modern, I mean, so that's a, but there is, where did we start? We started with the, let's impress people. For what we're trying to do with this, I think, and people were trying to attract, having those concrete plans as opposed to this ad that we've been writing for these conference of plans is going to be more effective when we show, Kerry could show this to a prospect, go here, look, this is what Arc City's plan is, these are the goals, there's, here's the metrics they're trying to hit. And that's going to carry more weight than what we've done in the past, don't you think?
The cookie cutter.
Yeah.
It's vague enough that, like you said, the signpost, you can just switch it out because that's what everybody's dealing, but.
Right.
To have them, to show them.
Right, and business people, that's what they expect to see. And when they see, they go, oh, they actually have a plan.
Because we do have business plan.
Exactly. So that's why I think we need to set some concrete goals and metrics and things to do to get there.
I think that would be a great thing to focus on in the next month between this meeting and the next one.
It's a powerful statement. It's very subjective.
It's very subjective, I'm perfect.
It's kind of the format.
Because I love the discussion.
Right.
But we have to figure out how to make these goals, like what do we mark?
Yeah.
It takes you to beyond what you want, is what are you willing to risk to get there? I mean, having those, I mean, I think this conversation is great, but having those tough conversations about what are you willing to put out there and risk? And what failures are you willing to accept and learn from and what you're not? And I think, you know, many communities are having those conversations right now and just having those upfront, honest conversations, I think, gets half the battle sometimes.
I, I don't know what the risks are of this strategy, the risk is, you know, money. I mean, it's going to cost the city staff time and effort and money to do this. But I don't think there's anybody that's going to go, there's not, that's not a risk that they're willing to take for this, I can't imagine. Well, I mean, what other risks? I'm not sure.
Well, if you focus on the wrong thing, maybe.
Well, yeah. But I think that's what we're trying to figure out, I'm sure we're focusing on the right thing. I think we've got an idea of the right things all right, we've been discussing this for several months now. And we're narrowing that down pretty good at this point.
Well, you know, we heard some of this yesterday in a regular meeting, maybe, maybe the risk is the, it doesn't work here, we can't do that here. You know, maybe it's that, getting rid of that mentality where, let's try it anyway.
Bucking the cave people?
Yeah.
And that's going to happen, that's not a risk, we know that is going to happen, that is.
But.
And you try something and it does fail, you're going to get in the backlash, but then when you try to get, you know, it's kind of, you're just learning each thing. But I know like one thing that's, because a lot of the communities are coming up the same thing about the dilapidated buildings downtown. So a lot of people look into the city to implement something so you cannot use a main street building as storage. But that's a huge risk for, it seems like there was a city that finally did it, but it's, it's to say, come on, use this as a write-off and it's the, the intention of this building is to have a business operating in it, not your storage unit. So that's, that's been a, quite a conversation. Where that goes, and that's the thing, it's so risky that.
Yeah. What is the status? I mean, I, I don't see tons and tons of, compared to other communities, of vacant downtown businesses, they're just not utilized maybe as well as they could be.
I think we're having internet issues.
I think would be, our biggest issue, how many, actually, do we have any vacant downtown?
I can tell you tomorrow when I had a spreadsheet.
Do you have a spreadsheet on that?
I have a list, I have the address, I have every.
I think a lot of those are kind of out of that core downtown.
There's probably more than.
Yeah.
Side streets and then on some others.
Right.
Yeah, it's backside.
Right, backside and then avenues, there's lots, a lot.
We've lost a lot last year during the pandemic, so it's crossed off, so that's a 50%.
Well, and I know there's a, there's some discussion on trying to bring Main Street to Arc City and then the RHID was expanded to include downtown, upper storage.
Right, right.
So that's, there are some potential tools that could be helpful for us down there.
Yeah. What else we got, Josh?
That's all we've got. Well, we can't do anything else anyways.
Yeah, we can't do anything, but I mean, anything else that you want.
There will be another flash show going live tomorrow at London.
What's that one?
It's going to be private budget oriented one, so we'll have that feedback and here's the commissioners on Friday during the budget work session. But please do feel free to participate, there are a few questions that touch on this maybe a little bit. There's some open-ended questions that we may get some of that response, but we're trying to not duplicate some of the first one, which had a little bit of this. But then we'll turn and do one pretty quick on housing, so we want to get that data for the hat and that's probably going to be prior to or just before your next meeting, so we'll have both of those. Look at it on that level. And then we'll probably do something economic development themed after that, push our little period a little bit on. You know, we get a lot of comments on the year, because I can tell you that's a popular topic, but there's some other angles to that that aren't people to think about. So if you've got any specific questions you'd like to see asked or certain things, let us know in the next few weeks, we'll start building those in.
And next month, we will probably try to start the next chapter of Parks and Recreation 2. I don't think we need to spend a whole meeting on economic development, unless you will hold on to it again.
I think we already started segueing into the quality of life discussion.
Yes.
I would like to have some tough conversations about our parks and.
Well, I would as well, okay.
We've got to build in person.
Even though we are below a quorum, I do think that record should reflect that this board commissioners appreciate the perseverance of the chair and the staff in driving these topics, presenting and driving whatever you guys are having to do, threaten blackmail, bribe. These community representatives and leaders become and learn their expertise and their ears, both the same. Appreciate it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
For your leadership for this group and the staff.
Thank you, Mr. Jennings.
And gentlemen, with the last second, I'm sorry to be late.
I've got four seconds for you now, look at that. But that and record. I don't think we need to make a formal adjournment since we already got adjourned by the executive board core member, so.
At the record, we're all right for that.
Yes. Thank you, I appreciate it, thank you Kerry for sticking through all this for two meetings.
Thanks, Marley.
Thanks for you.